Thank you for coming to tonight's, Monday, June 22nd, school board meeting. All members are in attendance except Director Bergstrom, who's out of town. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask for a motion to cancel tonight's study session.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. None opposed? Okay, now I will ask for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. First up tonight, we have recognition of the Jefferson Boys Lacrosse Team who came in second in state. I'd like to introduce their coach.
Yes, this is him.
There you are. Would you like to take the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for having us. I appreciate it. It's very nice to be recognized for the accomplishment that the boys have done this year. I know a lot of them put a lot of hard work in the last few years, not, you know, just this year. It was a lot of fun coaching the guys. I mean, to go eighteen and one is pretty remarkable, especially to win eighteen games in a row. You know, it's hard to come in second, but at the same time, nonetheless, it's an incredible accomplishment. And I know a lot of the kids, as pro- not only as a program, kids individually accomplished a lot of and broke a lot of records. I know, because I'm a Jefferson alumni and I played for Scott Keter, who couldn't be here tonight, that a lot of the records Jefferson holds as a team and a program were shattered, which is kind of fun, a lot of fun. And I know a lot of kids broke some state records as well. So, you know, thanks a lot for having us here and I appreciate it and it's pretty nice to be recognized for second in state, so, thank you.
Would you like to introduce your team members, if I can come up?
Sure.
And would you identify yourself too?
I'm Andrew Larson.
Okay.
I was assistant coach, varsity offensive coordinator.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is Wyatt Johnson. Ryan Graff. Josh Waldron.
My name's Wyatt Johnson. I play defense. That was my senior year, so I'm just graduated.
Can we have certificates for you guys?
Congratulations.
Ryan Graff, attack. I was a junior.
Here, congratulations.
Thank you.
Josh Waldron, midi, senior.
Congratulations.
Nate Boswell, senior, defense.
Well, congratulations to all of you and to your parents and the guys that couldn't come. We're very proud of you, so good luck next year.
Yeah. With those, do you want me to take those?
Yeah, I'll give the rest to you.
What's that?
I'll give the rest of them to you and you can give them to your assistant coaches and...
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Proud parents.
I'm guessing you probably would've felt better if you would've lost your first game of the season rather than last, but it is a significant accomplishment. That's, yeah, job well done. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Have fun at your meeting.
Yeah, stick around. It's a great time.
I'm sure you don't want to stay. All right. That brings us to Part A. Would someone like to move Part A?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Part A is our board business, our contracts and agreements and our finances. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That holds us to Part B. And the first thing up is conditional approval for encroachment into public easement agreement with the City of Bloomington. Someone would make that motion? Thank you. Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved the conditional approval for an encroachment into public easement at Kennedy High School with the City of Bloomington.
Second.
Thank you. And our Executive Director of Finance, Rod Zepchich, is here to talk to us about this.
Chairman Baralata Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is a project that was in the makes for probably about a year and a half now. As we've been looking at our different sites for safety, both for our buses, for students crossing and that, we've partnered up with the city and the county to come up with a what we were experiencing is when students were dropped off in the morning, they were cutting straight across the street over to the Holiday Gas Station before they entered into school. So what we've done is working with the city and the county, they are going to put a divider in, a crosswalk that is right out in front of the, kind of, the entrance off of Lindale, where you come into the parking lot.
Niclet.
Or Niclet. You come right off of Niclet into the parking lot. There'll be a crosswalk right in that area. There'll be fencing that goes along the whole sidewalk to the corner, so it will protect the students from just cut- cutting across. They'll have both the crosswalk at the corner and then us, the crosswalk right at the parking lot there, entrance. So what this is, is just giving the city the easement to be able to, for us to put the fencing and then also for them to put in the divide and the adjustment right in the parking lot area to be able to make this crosswalk work.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
When is this supposed to be happening? I mean, the enhanced crosswalk and everything?
They are trying to get it done this summer, is my understanding. It's been, what's taken so long is getting the grants from the city's perspective to do it.
So the fence will pretty much go from the, where you turn in all the way to the corner then, so?
Yeah, the fencing will be along that way. And I think the, the high school's also looking at putting up some money to do the fencing even more so along Ninety-Eighth also.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So when it says enhanced crosswalk, does that mean there'll be like a light there that they can push to cross, do you know, or?
I'm not sure of the exact setup of it. I think there's going to be more of the signage and the center island during the middle so that the students will be able to walk at least halfway through, so there'll be that type of thing. But it's going to be, you know, pretty much the signage and full-fledged, pretty much from the corner all the way to the next corner, a divide between the street there.
I think it's a really good idea. It's been a very dangerous situation for a long time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a quick comment, if any possibilities in the future to address that as well. You know, from the stadium after the games, towards the area where Burger King is, that's another sort of dangerous area. And there's a bunch of students that are always, you know, crossing and running late in the night after the game towards both the Holiday and the area of Burger King, where Burger King is. So that's just dangerous, something to keep in mind.
We'll have our safety coordinator take a look at those areas and see what type of options we can come. A lot of the times, what the challenges are, is with the city and the county of what we're able to do at different spots. And it's the best way to get some of these things done, like we've done at Jefferson, we've done at, here at Kennedy now, is a partnership between the city and, and then also, in this case, because it's a county road, also the county too.
Right. And with the amount of cars that are, you know, coming into the parking lot and then leaving after the game, it's pretty dangerous.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing nothing further, let's vote on this. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. That brings us to number two, transition to college program agreement, 2015-16 with Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. Someone would make that motion?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves entering into a transition to college T2C program agreement with Minnesota State Colleges and Universities for the 2015-16 school year.
Second. Thank you.
This is an agreement that the board has already approved, a similar agreement with the university system as PSCO. It's the same rate as a PSCO program. And what it is, is to pay for our tuition that we will be paying for the T2C students that will be going to Normandale next year.
So is this a different program than the PSCO, or?
Yes. This is a, where is the, what we've also known as before, as they talked about, is the super senior program of the kids that haven't met all the needed things as part of their pathway. It's how to get them to that pathway through this program.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing no further comments, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next, we have Bloomington Career and College Academy Agreement, 2015-16 with the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. Director Sorm.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves entering into a Bloomington Career and College Academy Agreement with the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities for the first and second trimester of the 2015-16 school year.
Second. Thank you.
This is a similar agreement. This is part of the BCCA program. What we're doing here is we're actually contracting with the college to have their professors come over to our campus to be able to instruct those classes that are part of the new BCCA program. And why, the reason for only the first two trimesters is that there's still some things to work out in the third trimester with some of the classes. We wanted to get this in place, the contracts in place for the first two trimesters, and we'll probably see something this fall that comes back to the board for the third trimester.
And so, we're confident that we'll have something in place for the third trimester?
Yes.
Just making sure, because that would be a real downer if we got two-thirds of the way through the year and it's like, oh, sorry, we're closed.
No. What it is, is there's a, some additional instruction that is needed, some clinical instruction. And it's, it's discussion between the, the college and the district of whether we want to do it internally and, and provide that in for, that instruction, or if we want to hire the college to do it.
Okay.
So it's just more of us having some time, both sides, to be able to see what is the best way to do it.
So either way, we'll have people to do it.
Correct.
Director Sorm?
And the courses or subjects, classes have been identified already and we've already contacted the colleges, instructors, teachers for these classes.
Is that going in now? That's all within Normandale. Normandale has worked that out of what, what instructors will be doing that.
Doing with various classes.
Correct.
Okay.
Director Bennett?
So what these courses that are being taught, are any of them being taught with our, our current teachers, or are they all being contracted to colleges and stuff?
All the cat classes that are being taught at the Career and College Academy are all going to be instructors from either Normandale, there'll be other contracts that come from Hennepin Tech, Dunwoody.
Tamara, I'm not sure if there's any additional ones other than those three?
That's what we have so far.
So are these courses, we don't have anybody that is certified to teach any of these courses, is that the situation, or?
I'll defer to Tamara then.
Well, as you know, that relationship is, there are certain requirements on both sides for men's school teachers to be teaching at high school and vice versa. We took this approach because of the concept of Career and College Academy, that we were giving that level of college experience in a supported guided environment, so not just the typical PSCO student who knows to meet certain requirements at the higher range of GPA, et cetera, but that we were targeting that middle group of students to have that college-like experience with men's school instructors in that environment and yet, but with Bloomington's support and guidance. So that's really under the concept of BCCA.
Perfect explanation, thank you. So this is the first two trimesters, so are students registered for?
Yes.
Third trimester already, or we did, we did the whole, next year's already registered?
Yes. The whole, it was part of the college, I mean, college, the high school registration.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That brings us to number four, Intermediate School District 917 Health and Safety Program Budget.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved their health and safety program budget of Intermediate District 917 and authorizes the inclusion of a proportionate share of Intermediate School District's health and safety projects in the district's application for health and safety revenue.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you.
This is a resolution that is done on an annual basis. The legislature gives the intermediate districts the authority to ask member districts to levy for health and safety projects within the district. That's put through to our taxpayers and then the intermediate then will bill us for that. The dollar amount of the 5549 that is this year is actually about $250 less than it was last year. It's been pretty much since we have moved to 917, has been anywhere between $5,900 to a low of 52, about $5,300. So they've been pretty much consistent in the smaller level. When we were at Intermediate 287, there were times that we were in $11,000 to $10,000 range. So it's, we found that they've been very reasonable and it's been on an as-need basis that they have asked us to levy for this amount.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Think on that resolution, you're going to need a roll call vote.
Okay.
If they're going to fill in all the, all the rest of that document there.
This, health and safety?
Yep.
Okay, we'll start with Don.
Aye.
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 There we go. Thank you. That worked. Next, we will have the committed funds category, fund balance categories. Would someone like to make that resolution? Go ahead.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the following committed fund balance categories for the 2014-15 year. Third-party medical assistance, wellness dollars, band uniform and instrument replacement, operating referendum, transportation, transportation building, transportation bus purchases, severance insurance, staff development, athletics and activities, QCOM.
Second.
Thank you.
This is a resolution that is also done on an annual basis and it's actually a three-part process, where tonight what we're asking you to do is set up categories for the year-end audit that will come to the board in November. What it does is it puts categories in place. Legislation or GASB requires us to put categories in place to be able to dedicate those dollars once the audit comes in and we know exactly amounts that would hit that area. What you've seen from this year to last year, when the board approved this resolution, is there were some reductions in some of the areas. As part of our current year of fund balance being spent down by, budgeted at $7.4 million, it's taking some of those categories off that we had, committed funds in, and bringing those, those dollars back in to pay for those. So what we'll be doing is coming back to the board in November with the dollar amounts that would hit in those categories. And then there can always be an adjustment with the budget update that we do in, in November, or December or January, that the board can always adjust those committed dollar amounts for the next year.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one more.
It's that time of year.
Adoption of the 2015-16 budgets. Director Sorm?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the proposed 2015-16 revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. You're on.
This is the proposed budget that was presented to the board last week in a study session, where we went through all the categories within the budget. As a kind of a guideline within the overall budget, I think the key point that I'd want to make mention of is that the general fund budget was based at, starting with a beginning balance of $9 million. We had revenues of 100 and, almost $119 million, expenditures of $121 million. So again, a spend-down of about $3 million this next year to come with an ending balance of $6.2 million, and that's after the $4 million of budget reductions.
Thank you. Director Sorm?
Yeah, I just want to thank Rod for putting all these together, coming back from New Jersey in early morning and then getting through all of these other things. It's very helpful, even though some of them are annual ones, but it's still good to have all of these things done in place. So thank you very much for that. As long as Dick Bergstrom isn't here, I just want to thank you for all that you've done.
Awesome.
Anyone else have any questions or comments regarding this?
Just follow up on that. Thank you for rescinding all that information that the board requested of us.
You're welcome. And again, I will get the additional ones that Director Bennett wanted also.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions or comments on this, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go into our policy review. And the first one is a second, a second reading of new policy 427 workload limits for certain special ed teachers. And our human resources director is here to... Okay, go ahead.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the second reading of policy 427 workload limits for certain special education teachers.
Second.
Thank you. Mary?
Chairman Baralata Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, this is the second reading of the new policy that we introduced previously that establishes that we do have workload limits for special education teachers. Any further questions from what I had previously?
Were there any changes?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we'll move to a first reading of revised policy 601.1, the graduation requirements.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of revised policy 601.1, graduation requirements.
Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox is here to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the board. Tonight I am bringing you the first reading of policy 601.1, graduation requirements. The recommendation to modify this policy is being made in response to recent legislative change that was made to State Statute 124D.09 subdivision eight, which now allows school districts to extend educational services to students who have not yet met our local requirements to graduate. Our intention is to align the district graduation requirements with our students' personal growth plans, their PGPs, and the career and college readiness expectations that will be embedded within their plans. It's important to note that we'll, of course, will keep the, all of the current state and local academic requirements as a minimum level for students to graduate from Bloomington Public Schools. But administration is recommending that the school board add a requirement that students must complete the career and college readiness goals that would be outlined in their PGPs. They should do that prior to actually earning their diploma. This is a direct connection to our refreshed strategic plan that requires every student to have a PGP. If you would indulge me for a minute, I'd have you hearken back to the fall where we had our stakeholder meetings. And we asked parents, we asked stakeholders, what was important? What do you want to have as part of these PGPs? And college and career readiness was part of that. Some of the goals that were there, how will my child be successful? How are you going to help us do that? And as we've been moving through the year, we've begun building that system and the structures to assist our students and assist families as they move forward. So when you're asked, and you will be, whatever happened to that? Do you guys really listen? Do you act on what we, we ask you to do? Yes. The answer is yes. As a board, you've done that extremely well, and I appreciate the opportunity again to bring you this policy as it lines up and really begins to bring pathways to graduation to life for our students. So that's our rationale about why we're bringing the, the policy forward. And if you'd permit me, I will quickly run through some of the proposed changes that we're recommending for policy and regulation. So on page one of policy, we added "local" to the graduation requirements, along with the state requirements. I would say that we've always had that ability to have local requirements and have, we're just calling that out in policy. In addition, we've also added the expectation that our students will be career and college ready. So that's policy on the first page. In regulation, if you look at section 1B, we changed the effective date of this regulation to next school year, so the 2015-16 school year. In 1B2, we clarified that we count course credits, which here for us is trimester credits. And we eliminated the top end limit on the number of credits possible, since students may now extend their time with us if they need to complete additional courses that would be aligned with their PGP or their personal growth plans as they move forward. In 1B3, we struck all of the course names that are not specifically called out in state requirements. The rationale here was simply that course names can change and we didn't want to have to bring back policy or regulation to change names in the future, should that be necessary. If you note, all the total credit requirements remain, so we made no credit changes there, just struck the course names themselves. Then in 1B4, we actually added the requirement for students to complete their career and college goals related to their PGP. And finally, in sections C1, participation in graduation exercises, and C2, the awarding of diplomas, the recommendations there are to reflect the new PGP completion requirement. And the intent of these changes was to allow students really to have the opportunity to choose the graduation ceremony in which they wish to participate. They certainly have a minimum standard that they need to meet, and then at that point they could choose to walk with their class. Or if they're going to continue to their, complete their PGP goals, they could wait until that has done and choose a later ceremony to participate in. The goal being, pick a ceremony, whichever is most meaningful to you, let the, the student participate in that graduation ceremony. Their diploma would actually be conferred upon the completion of both the academic requirements as well as the, the PGP or college and career goal requirements. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. Again, this is a first reading, so we'll, we'll take feedback and make adjustments and we'll come back to you for a final second reading.
Director Sorm, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, this is impressive that there's so much redlining in here. Yeah, this is impressive that there's so much redlining in here. Did you have, and being that I'm a process person, how big was the committee that you worked on, or was this just your, yours on the weekend that you did it?
Yeah, it wasn't just, it wasn't me alone. I actually had, I gave it out to all cabinet. High school principals looked at it, some extended other staff looked and reviewed this, but we didn't form a committee specifically around this. What I will tell you that will have to happen in the fall is if you note at the end of the policy, it references policy, I believe it's 513.1, the granting of credits, that will come back to you in the fall, and it will go through the Pathways Advisory Committee, which is the former DCAF, right? The District Curriculum Committee, it's now Pathways Committee, will look at 513 and identify all of the how of how kids earn credits. This is just the what, credits they'll need. Yep, so that will be coming back to you in the fall.
I have a question. Chris, if you could help me understand this, this is not directly related to the policy itself. It's more about the graduation requirements and the way that the schools, our schools work with our students.
Yes.
I do not have a student who's graduating yet, so I'm just trying to kind of understand how this works. But how do you work along with the students to get there in a successful way, and what is, what is going to be different from what was done in the previous years to what is coming according to these new requirements?
That's a fantastic question. Thank you for asking it, because in the past, we've really leaned very heavily on academic requirements. So you've passed a course, check, done, and we've moved on. The new way of thinking, or the new way of doing businesses, is focused on their personal growth plan. So each student will determine what they want to be when they grow up, and as they move their way through that plan, we'll assist them in registering for the appropriate courses, getting connected to the appropriate courses. And some of the students perhaps will do that on an accelerated timeline and be done early, you know, maybe less than a four years, which it references here. Other students may want to take more time or need to take more time before they leave us and truly would be ready for a career or ready to go into college. So one of the things we know will happen, and I believe is really the basis for the legislative change, is that when students leave us, the fact that they've completed coursework does not necessarily make them college-ready. So they could be signing up to take courses at Normandale or any of the colleges, and they say, you have to take a remedial class before we'll let you progress. Well, with these, with the new legislation and these changed requirements, we could have that student remain, should they choose, a Bloomington Public School student to take that course under our umbrella to get ready for college and then eventually transition to Normandale, for example. So the transition to college program that was referenced earlier this evening is one of those ways that we could keep those students engaged in Bloomington or under our umbrella, but provide that additional educational opportunity that they need.
Perfect. And so who's going to be the person in the schools in charge of walking the students through this process and the growth plan?
Yep.
And are we kind of starting with the ninth graders as well, or how does that process is expected to start?
Yeah, we're pulling that all together. So it was probably a month ago, maybe longer now that we had the presentation on the PGP. So Natalie Goldberg, Katrina Mezra had been doing a lot of that work, John Weiser and his team kind of had brought some of that forward. So as we bring that into next year, that concept will start becoming reality. And each of our students, clearly we're focused on the high school as we move forward, but eventually our strategic plan says all learners. So we'll have to age appropriately, make sure those plans make their way back into the system for all learners. But we will be focused on high school learners and developing those plans.
Sounds like an exciting process.
It will be wonderful for students.
Yeah.
You know, again, this is the example of building the bridge. Remember in those stakeholder meetings, we had a graphic of a bridge that was misaligned. It didn't line up, and that's what we don't want to happen. We want to continue these conversations to meet the needs of each of our learners.
Well, thanks for doing that.
So I'm looking at the science credits here, how currently it's three credits of electives, and that's being changed to three credits of either chemistry or physics?
Correct. The state actually is asking students to complete those. So the state actually calls out physical science, biology, and either chemistry or physics now. Students must do that, those.
So I know we have like astronomy, is that something that's going to be, going to go by the wayside because it's no longer?
Students can take more than, these are just minimums. So they have, so the courses that are specifically called out remain in terms of title, but if a student wanted to take astronomy or any other science elective, absolutely can add that to their schedule.
But they couldn't use that to fulfill their science credit, so it might see a drop in those classes then?
Yep, there are specific, well, these aren't, these haven't, I wonder, I can't remember when chemistry and physics went, and it's been two or three years now that those have been required by the state. So as we move forward, those would be embedded, or their standards would be embedded. I think, believe there's some legislation for both math and science as well, that some of the career courses or could qualify for those credits as well. So again, which courses qualify? They need to do this, this is the what, the how, and what courses? That 513, policy 513, through the Curriculum Advisory Council, the new Pathways Advisory Council can look at some of that and bring recommendations back for how we might do that.
Okay, and then also in the social studies, the 11 credits of social studies, and we're removing all of these requirements and we're keeping economics and government, so does that mean that we're going to have the possibility of kids graduating without ever having U.S. history, or?
Nope. They have 11 credits of social studies, which you can see what we really eliminated here, they're not calling out the specific names of courses. What they are saying is students must have economics and government before they graduate. What we would do then, through our curriculum process, is embed the other standards into courses under whatever title we best deem fit. So at ninth grade, cover certain standards, 10th grade, 11th grade, but it won't necessarily be world history, U.S. history as a title of the course, but those standards would be embedded inside.
So there's not going to be, there's not going to be multiple options of different histories per grade, it's pretty much going to be 10th grade history, 11th grade history?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and then the last question was the physical education. So they only need a trimester of ninth grade and a trimester at 10th grade, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep, and health, one credit of health. That's correct.
Okay. I thought it was, I thought that it's due two years, no, it's just a trimester.
And that's a local standard, right?
That is a local standard.
What is the state standard, is there?
There is no FIAED or health requirement for a diploma in the state. But they do have standards that they put forward in physical education and health. So we follow those standards, but it's not required to earn a diploma.
So I remember we were having a conversation with our Youth Advisory Council, some of their concern was that those that are doing athletics and other sports, that they're still having on top of that, have to meet these requirements, or they're able to use that, or are we going to look at addressing that someday down the road?
So that's, again, I'm going to go back to 513. What's in 513? What we've done so far, so that's a good question, what have we done? We heard that feedback, what have we done with that feedback? We have made sure that we continue to offer the early bird options at both of the high schools. We've added summer options at both of the high schools. We're accepting online courses that are accredited by the state, so that's another option that we had. And I know that some of the early bird summer is hybrid, so potentially there may have been additional options as our teachers work on that curriculum and go forward. To date, I haven't seen anything moving forward that would replace a FIAED credit with an athletic team or a competition, but if that was something the board wanted that group, the curriculum group, to look at, they certainly, you could ask them to do that.
I think it's worth looking at, I'm going to see what their opinions of it is, because I mean, these kids that are going to early bird already, and then they're going to school all day, and then they're staying after school for practice of athletics, do they really need to also have a physical ed class in there as well, when they can take something else?
Yep.
It might be beneficial, but the committee would be better.
Toward the credit, though, doesn't it have to be a licensed teacher?
So what we have to do is be able to say that they, one of the options in policy 513 is credit for learning. So in theory, you could come and say, I have this knowledge, and you demonstrate that through whatever means we determine, could be an exam, could be other, but if you could do that, you could actually earn credit for learning. One of the other things that committee will have to wrestle with a little bit in the fall is a rigorous course waiver, which people have asked about, which means that if a student feels that they can't fit in all of the requirements because of the rigor of the courses they're taking for their schedule, then they could ask to have that course waived, whatever course, could be FIAED, could be other, and then the committee would want to have some system, some procedure for that as well, should that request come.
So on the last question, of the total 65 credits, I mean, how many electives are kids allowed to take throughout their high school career?
Well, with this shifting, they're really allowed to take more if it's aligned to their particular career or college choice. And in our way of thinking, as we've evolved this, really your choice to go to college is that it's leading you to whatever career you want. So what is it that you want to be when you grow up? And then potentially, they would be able to stay and take additional elective courses, because they will probably have met the minimum academic requirements, but would take additional courses for, whether they be remedial or other, electives to make their way to achieving those career goals in their PGP. So we haven't set a maximum number, we've simply set the bottom number, depending on how long a student needs to stay with us.
So there's no like minimum requirement of electives? I remember when I went to high school, you'd have like certain amount of just electives?
Yeah, I think it's probably, if I do in the math, like, yeah, roughly, in order to hit the additional, if I added those up.
I think this is 57 here is what we're requiring.
So to hit the minimum, it would be like eight.
Because we want, you know, them to have the ability to have a wide spectrum of choices and?
Correct.
No?
And moreover, I think the point of the personal growth plan and the pathways to graduation or to success is really about what do they want to do and how do we assist them in doing that? So rather than prescribing any particular elective, what is your area of interest and how do we help you do that?
Okay, thanks.
Now?
Just in the interest of open disclosure, I guess, I don't know. At about five o'clock, I'd sent Chris a few questions, and so I just thought, maybe if you want to just run over that, that way you don't have to type up another email and send it out.
You bet.
But it was basically, I'd asked, students may complete their requirements in fewer than or more than four years, but I was asking about, is there an age, at what time, at what point, we can no longer hold them as a student?
Right, and the answer to that is age 21. You cannot go beyond age 21, and in terms of where they would attend, it really is driven by student and the program choice. So it could be Jefferson, it could be Kennedy, it could be Metro South, it could be the Career Academy, any of those, depending on what they want to be and where we can best meet their needs.
Another one was, it was just a point of clarification, it said you have to earn a minimum of 65 credits to graduate, but you can participate in ceremonies if you, once you've completed 62. So I was just, wanted to make sure that that, that was right, and so you could technically participate prior to graduating, like say if you had just one semester left.
Correct. And so a student can participate, as they do now, they can walk in the ceremony, but don't actually receive their diploma until they've met all the requirements. And that's, the concept again with section C was about choose which ceremony you want to participate in, but we wouldn't have them participate in multiple ceremonies over various years.
And then the last one was about making sure they were college-ready. I, no, I just heard something in the news, the headline was something to the effect of, why are so many of our college freshmen in high school, or college freshmen having to take remedial math courses? Our school's not getting them ready for college. And so the question was to the effect of, can they take, say, a Normandale placement exam prior to going? Because I know when I went to school, you didn't take your placement exams until you got there. So you paid your money, you show up, and then they take your test, and then it's like, oh, okay, well now I figure out where I fit in. And so can we get them the exam before we give them diploma? Because then, I'm assuming it's too late, once you give them the diploma, for them to come back and say, oh, by the way?
Correct.
I need, I need you to pay for a couple of my classes.
Yeah, if they accept that diploma, that's true. So what our intention is, is to do exactly what you're saying, have that information in advance, talk with the student, their parents' guardians, to say, this seems to be the best plan for your child, let's, let's set that up for them so we can extend that experience and allow them to take those courses. The other thing that was asked earlier, I think Director Bennett asked about, you know, who's teaching those courses? What would be absolutely, probably a win-win is to see if we couldn't get some of our teachers' status so that the credit not only was a Bloomington credit, but was articulated with those college, and our, and of course, our teachers could teach that, and, you know, some of their teachers are teaching others, so that both sides working for what's best with, for that student would be ideal as we move forward.
All right, hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, the first reading of revised policy 601.1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Oh, and since Dick Bergstrom isn't here, and this is your last board meeting, I would just like to say thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this and for serving our district.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Good one, Rick.
Next, we'll have first reading of revised policy 806, the use of school facilities. I would like to move this resolution. Thank you.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of revised policy 806, use of school facilities.
Second, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. Here today to present the first reading of policy 806 with Doug Langfels, he's been working on this policy. So I'm just kind of jumping in at the last minute here and catching up. Really, the purpose that we are trying to accomplish with the revisions were to look ahead and look at right sizing the budget, the installation of air conditioning into facilities, and balancing revenue and community use within the policy. The process that was used was Doug reached out to multiple people, including Bloomington Athletic Association, the high school ADs, and Assistant Superintendent, to look at balancing those two things, the installation of air conditioning and bottom-line budget. In the policy itself, you'll see a lot of language cleanup and clarification throughout. The biggest change is in section 2B in looking at new class guidelines, and that was working with BAA and some of our ongoing issues of the use of the facilities in order to better monitor, be fair, but also balance who is using it at what class level. And so that's where the major changes are in section 2B under number three. Moving forward, we decided after a meeting about three weeks ago that we would like to form a policy group to better monitor this policy, because part of the recommendations and changes are because there was some inconsistency in how it was applied. So we, together, working as a group with the ADs, will be working to monitor the changes and make sure that, moving forward, that it's equitable to all agencies using the facilities.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
I mean, it looks good, everything makes sense. There was just one thing that caught my eye that I thought, in the request for facilities under D, where it says a minimum of two working days of mass notice, I'm thinking you could probably ask for more than that. You know, most places are like at least seven or 30, but I mean, if you're fine with two and you think that that's reasonable, you know, I'm not going to, I wouldn't argue that, but something to consider.
Thank you. Director Sorm, you have a question?
I just had one, the last time we revised it was in 2006. So we've, we've struggled and had lots of questions from all the different groups as they've entered into arrangements and requests so far, so it's good to see that this... as they've entered into arrangements and requests and so forth. So it's good to see that this got cleaned up as we move forward because usage is getting to be more and more and more out of town. Groups are liking the facilities and so forth. By adding air conditioning, I'm sure we could probably increase our, uh, our usage.
Thank you. Can I just ask, you, um, compare our prices with other cities and districts and things like that, right?
That's correct. We want to be competitive because we do want the business.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. I just had a quick follow-up question. After we have the first reading, who does it go to? Or how is it, how is it dispersed for others to see that may have other corrections to it, too? Same thing applies to the, the previous one, too. We've always had first readings and sometimes they've gone out to various committees. I don't know if, if you send it out to BAA or bring other people in and say, hey, this is what's going to happen now. What do you think of that?
I can, I can take that. The first reading is for the board to provide input. The thing has already been processed with community members and with staff. So we're going to take your input. Any questions or comments you have, we take it and we deliberate on it and we return with a second reading for board consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone?
I actually have one question there.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, at letter D, that number four, letter D, kitchen. Uh, kitchen, all kitchen use must be pre-approved by the district food service supervisor. Train, food service, uh, staff must be present to provide general supervision of school equipment. Is this for all events? Is that what he means? Is, is it that somebody needs to be present in all events that are, where, where food is being served?
Doug, it's my understanding that this is when groups are requesting to use our actual kitchen facilities, which is very, very few events a year where they're use, want to use our kitchens for it. So that's what that is in reference to.
Okay, so only when the use of the kitchen is happening, but not necessarily when there is a different kind of event? Not, I mean, a food service staff member does not have to be present at it?
Correct. Thank you.
Has anything that's been said here changed anyone's vote? All right, we'll go again. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. That brings us to progress reports calendar.
Is there a sheet in there?
I.
Was there a sheet handed out to the board? Okay, in your packet.
It's online.
Yes. We just got the digital copy. We didn't, we didn't get a digital copy.
Are you going to put it up on the screen, Tim? Yeah, please. Thank you. Okay, what you, what's on the screen is a matrix. It shows a calendar for the coming eleven months. And it shows the different progress reports that the administration has tentatively scheduled to present, to share with the board. You can start at the top, division cards. Dave Highstead will do it in August. This is where he shows the success measures for the district. He'll talk about the results for the previous year and the coming year, and what he's proposing as success measures for the coming year. There are going to be some changes. So that's going to be in August. Strategic directions are three for the three component framework, instruction, management, and learning support. You can see on instruction, Tim Anderson plans to make two presentations, one in January, one in June, about the work he's doing. In the management area, we're going to be focusing on the BCCA program. And we will be ready to make a report, a progress report to the board in November. And these progress reports are about what our plans are and where we're at in achieving those plans. Learning supports, Andy Kuba's will be making a report in January and June. The board goals, recall, there are two long-range goals. One would be the financial plan of facilities master plan. The long-range facility plan, Rod should be ready in December for the financial plan and the facilities master plan. He'll be ready in October to make a presentation. As far as referable related items, we have the PGT report. John Weiser will make, present, plans to make a presentation in November and in May. Safety presentation was done in July. In June, we just had one. We've scheduled one sometime this coming, in the next eleven months. As far as being leaders, research, we have a return on investment report. And Dave Highstead plans to do that report in February. Negotiations, we'll be presenting reports throughout the coming months. And those are what we plan to schedule. If the board is interested, and we'll be adding to this list as we move along. If the boards is interested in hearing anything, we'll be happy to take requests and schedule it. There was a request that maybe we should come back on each item at least twice a year, rather than just once. So this is just a working draft for the board to consider.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
And if you think of anything, just call me up and I'll be happy to have a conversation with the chair about this.
My thoughts is that twice a year probably makes sense. Um, if we start doing that, we're like, well, after six months, there isn't anything to report, then.
Right.
We can always change it. But it does, it seems like when it's something that we get once a year, sometimes we, I forget, okay, what did we talk about?
Sure.
A year ago? So it keeps us, you know, kind of up to date and, okay, so how is it going? You know, mid, mid-year checkup seems like it makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to our.
Just one last thing. If you recall, this completes our cycle in continuous improvement. We start with a strategic plan, the success measures, our plans, and these are the progress reports where we show how we're moving toward the vision. Okay? So, thank you.
Um, that brings us to our summary statement of the superintendent evaluation, twenty fourteen fifteen. Would you like to read the statement or is it okay if I?
I don't have it.
Okay. Then I will do it.
I mean, it's in your summary.
In accordance with board policy four fifty-one, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one has completed its annual superintendent evaluation for the twenty fourteen fifteen school year. The evaluation covered nine performance areas and eight leadership traits. The superintendent exceeded expectations in all areas reviewed, especially in the areas of sound financial management, establishing and maintaining good relationships with agencies and personnel outside of the district, and updating the strategic planning process, including short and long-term goals. The board looks forward to new initiatives and programs and continued improvement in communication between the board, superintendent, administration, and the public. So thank you for that. And now I would like to report on the closed session that we had last week regarding negotiations. The School Board, superintendent, and members of cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, June fifteenth, for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. No school board action was taken or required. So thank you for that. And that brings us to board member reports. Anybody? I know. Seeing as how school's out, we're, we're kind of slacking here, is that okay?
I have, I have one thing that I forgot before, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that the, um, special education advisory council did have a year-end get-together and a little special celebration because Eric Melby will be leaving their committee and, um, moving on to his new position. So, um, you know, the only decisions that were made as far as the meeting was that they would decide their officers in the fall. So that was the extent of it. It was mostly just a celebration. So, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Since Mr. Burkstrom is not here, I'd like to take this time to say thank you to the administration, my fellow board members in the cabinet, since we are taking a four-week, five-week hiatus. Uh, and thanks for all of your hard work and continued hard work, and we'll see you in August.
Enjoy July.
My second.
I do want to, um, just mention that we will be having a table at SummerFET in a week, July third, uh, down at Normandale Lake. And, um, I'm still looking for somebody to fill the third hour slot, if you're interested. And we need to discuss what we're going to have at this table. So, um, do you have?
I, I just, because I did it last year, I do remember that I got a lot of questions about the boundaries. Especially people with future kindergartners wanting to know what elementary they lived in. So it'd be nice if we had a boundary map people could look at there. That was, that was the most frequent question is what area do I, where do I, where do I live? Where am I going to school?
And then maybe, um, along those lines, if people aren't aware that Hillcrest is a community school, maybe if we had information related to Hillcrest and if they wanted to apply, which at this point it might be.
Well, what we.
But.
What we had last year is every school has a little brochure and every school's brochure was there and then they could take the one that their school, so they would, could learn about Hillcrest, but they'd have to know.
They'd have to know.
Of course, that it was a community school to take it, yeah. So, and some of them didn't know which ones to pick up because they didn't know their boundaries.
So we had information on all of our, um, early childhood programming and preschool options and stuff like that, do you recall?
Um, there was a little bit, I think, but we could maybe put some more of that, too.
Since there's a lot of little kids that are going to that and people, a lot of people don't even know that we have ECFE classes and preschool, so.
What I recall from those times going, there, there was not, there were not too many questions about the preschool options just because people did not have an idea. Like, they, what they had in mind was K-12, no preschool. So I don't know, there could be anything else that we could do this year that kind of catches the attention of people and then they don't just walk by because they have little kids and they think, oh, the preschool, I don't need this information yet. So they don't stop because of that.
Good point.
Well, I think having, just having smaller brochures and pathways to graduation, I don't know if they had any of those brochures there either. But a big enough one hanging out in front of our booth might be, um, interesting to passersby. But otherwise, yeah, a lot of the departments in the past, we've had a lot of departments, brochures from a lot of different departments, special ed, um, a variety of different ones like that that we had in case anybody wanted. What's the third hour?
Everything we drag down, there we have it.
And that's the responsibility, responsibility of the third hour team, right?
So, uh, do we have a, a dunking booth would be a good idea for superintendent?
Thank you.
Are you volunteering to spend all four hours in there now?
I love dunking.
It's a hot day, yeah.
All right, well, we will discuss it further, but just so everyone knows, we will be there. Brings us to our superintendent's report.
Okay, just to clarify what Director Levo referenced earlier, there will be no school board sessions in July. Second is that we have, we're planning a joint city council, school board meeting for sometime in August. Third thing is the Hepburn Theater Trust is a not-for-profit organization. They own a number of theaters. The Orpheum Theater is one that they own. Their mission is to, to art enrichment for community cultural development. And the way they do that, one of the ways they do that is they have a spotlight musical theater program. They recognize high school performances and they honor students in those performances. Sort of like the Academy Awards for high school productions. They have two, um, events, one's for the fall productions and the other is for the spring productions. On June fifteenth of this month, schools were honored. This year, a record number of schools were, had productions, seventy-seven schools, over six thousand students participated. Jefferson was recognized for the physical, the musical production and a number of their students were recognized as honorees for the performances. And Kennedy High School was recognized for the Shrek the Musical production and a number of students in that performance were recognized too. So you would be hearing more about these awards. It's very prestigious. So congratulations to both schools and their students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board tonight? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.